Call this meeting James City County Board of Supervisors business meeting to order on July 25th, 2023 at 1:00 P. M. Hold call please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. McGlynn?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
All right, we'll move into presentations. Patrick, you're first up. Welcome, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure this evening to recognize Brigada White for 30 years of service to the county. Brigada started with James City County in what we called, at that time, the data processing department in March of 1993. As a computer operator for a data general mini-computer, which many computers then were about the size of a good-sized bedroom. She also served the county as a PC support technician, systems administrator, electronic documents management administrator, database administrator, and email administrator. Few of Brigada's significant accomplishments include maintaining and accounting for our Microsoft software licensing for over 20 years, building, maintaining, and improving the electronic document management system, storing hundreds of thousands of official county records, and making a good portion of those records available on the Internet to our citizens. Maintaining databases for county primary software systems like our financials, asset management, land management, permitting, human resources, payroll, real estate assessments, and at times, public safety. Over the past five years, Brigada has managed the county's email system and migrated the operation to the cloud, providing better accessibility to our mobile staff while maintaining security. For two things, you could always count on from Brigada, no matter what the assignment or project, was their attention to detail and her persistence to solve a problem the right way. So from all of us at Information Resources Management and James City County, we wish you well in your retirement, and thank you for the services to the citizens.
And Mr. Chairman, can I just say that Brigada was the very first of the IT support staff to help me figure out how to deal with my technology? She did a great job, as have all those who followed her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we'll go into the 2023 Historical Commission Essay Contest Awards. Ben. Good morning.
Good, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. The Historical Commission Essay Contest Award was, we had four questions this year. And we had an extremely good essay on, "Look at the Life of Lady Frances Berkeley," from Aaron Green. So Aaron is our first prize winner, and the others, you know, we're, we're just giving one award this year. So I'd like to call Mr. Aaron Green up. There he is. I think they do. Wonderfully written, really. So next year, we're going to go past the public schools. We're going to go to some private schools and some homeschool folks in advance, so we can get some more participation in this, because we want to be very inclusive and try to count everybody in that, that would like to write an essay for us. So, you know, the Historic Commission appreciates everything that Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hippel, that you do for us. Scott, same, you know, thanks for your support, and Ruth and John, and Mr. Eisenhour and Sue, thank you. We, we just want to thank all of you. We really appreciate your assistance.
Mr. Jacob asked, is, is the essay going to be available for citizens to read?
Absolutely.
Great. How?
I, I have a copy here. What I'll do is, is I'll go ahead and I'll email it and, and catch it to every one of you, so that you've got a copy of it.
Thank you very much.
And I'll get that off to you this afternoon.
Thank you.
Okay? Thanks again. We appreciate your support.
Congratulations, Aaron.
Appreciate your help. All right, next we'll do a proclamation for the master gardeners. John, would you take that over, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to, to handle this proclamation. The master gardeners of, of James City County and Williamsburg, and let me notice the order, celebrated the 40th anniversary of master gardeners in James City County on Sunday, and I was fortunate enough to attend the picnic that they held in honor of that event, and it, I guess, just their annual picnic as well. But at that time, I did have the opportunity to extend the best wishes from the county to the master gardeners on that accomplishment. And we have a number of members of the Master Gardeners Executive Committee and other members of the, of the leadership of the organization. I'd ask them to come on up and just join us up here. Come on. Proclamation commending the James City County-Williamsburg Master Gardeners Association 40th Anniversary. Whereas, the James City County-Williamsburg Master Gardeners Association, a volunteer-driven nonprofit organization that supports the outreach mission of the Virginia Cooperative Extension in Williamsburg, James, and James City County, and New Kent celebrate its 40th anniversary in 2023. And whereas, the Extension Master Gardener Program was established in 1972 in the state of Washington and has since spread to all 50 states and the District of Columbia, four Canadian provinces, and South Korea, operating in the, in the Commonwealth through the Virginia Cooperative Extension, and master gardener associations like the James City County-Williamsburg Master Gardeners Association. And whereas comprised of over 200 master gardeners, the JCC Williamsburg Master Gardeners Association volunteer, are volunteer educators who work with the community to encourage and promote environmentally sound practice, horticultural practices through sustainable landscaping, management, education, and training. And whereas, throughout the year, the JCC WMGA provides guidance on sustainable landscapes, conducts plant clinics, oversees overall garden areas, including elementary schools, parks, and public buildings, and provides education, educational seminars at various demonstrations of gardening throughout the community. Whereas, James City County Williamsburg Master Gardeners Association endeavors to improve and protect local watersheds by promoting responsive water use and other conservation practices, fostering the vitality of the region for the benefit of future generations. Now hereby be it resolved that the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of James City County do hereby commend the James City County-Williamsburg Master Gardeners Association for their 40th year, 40 years of dedicated service to James City County. In witness, whereas, I, Michael Hippel, set my hand and cause the seal of the county of James City County, Virginia, to be affixed this 25th day of July 2023. And I did just want to add one other thing. Thanks to the work of our volunteers here, I got at accounting this morning of the amount of work, just to give you an indication of the impact that they've had on the community. In this year-to-date, they have contributed 13,000 hours to maintaining gardens, educating people on horticulture, and providing all sorts of sustainability services. That equates to the value of about $377,000 of their time and effort to this community. So thank Deb, the current president, and Vicky, the incoming president, the current and outgoing treasurer, Linda Nielsen, Terry McGlynn, who's on the training team, and Elizabeth Meyer, who's on the Board of Directors as well. So thank you. And if you'd like to say a word or two, Deb?
I'd just like to thank the Board of Supervisors for this, for honoring us in this way. We do feel that 40, 40 years of master gardening in, in James City County, Williamsburg, historical triangle area is quite an accomplishment, and we do greatly appreciate the support of the county board and the various departments of the county in our efforts. We work with a number of departments. We work with a number of other local partnerships, and we're just delighted to be able to be here to celebrate our anniversary with you. I have some anniversary pins for the supervisors.
We might want the board members to have a photograph taken with the master gardener.
All right, before we get started on the next one, I, I wanted John to do that, asked him would he mind doing it, and he went to the picnic, said he had so much fun and all that, and I said, well, what better person to, to represent the master gardeners here for the board than, than John and all the hard work y'all have done? So thank you very much for everything you've done through James City County, how beautiful it looks. Great job, ladies. Thank you. And let the whole team know. Thank you very much. All right, next we're going into National Night Out, August 1st, 2023. Whereas, for, oh, chief, there you go. I'm sorry, I get going on things. I just roll right through. Say it's the whole team. Keep bending. All right. You're doing nice. Come on in here. All right. Whereas, for 40 years, the National Association of Town Watch sponsored a national community building campaign on Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, in lighting the National Night Out. And whereas, the National Night Out campaign provides an opportunity for neighbors in James City County to join thousands of communities, all, from all 40 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide. And whereas, the National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes strong police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie, and makes our neighborhoods safer and, and a more caring place to live and work. Whereas, and whereas, neighborhoods in James City County assist the James City County Police Department through joint community-building efforts to support National Night Out 2023. And whereas, it is essential that all neighbors in James City County come together with police and work together to build a safer, more caring community. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Board of Supervisors of James City County, do hereby call upon all citizens of James City County to join the James City County Police Department and the National Association of Town Watch in support of a National Night Out on Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. Be it further resolved that we, the Board of Supervisors of James City County, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 1st, 2023 as National Night Out in James City County. In witness thereof, I do set my hand and cause the seal of James City County of Virginia to be affixed this 25th day of July 2023.
Chief? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Would y'all like to say a few words, chief?
Thank you, Chairman Hippel, members of the board. National Night Out is an important aspect of what we do in law enforcement. The proclamation says exactly what this is all about, is building community relationships. We cannot do what we do without our community involvement, and we cannot do this alone. So this is a chance for us to get out into the neighborhoods, different communities, to meet our residents, to talk with them, hear their concerns, but also start building those relationships. So thank you for this proclamation, and we're looking forward to next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Board, would y'all like to do a picture?
Sure.
Jason, second duty.
All right, next we'll go into awards and commendations, information resource management. Patrick, welcome back.
Always like to see when we receive awards, the half and hard work they do. It's always good to see.
Mr. Chairman, while they're working on that, I, I'd like to mention one other award that I was going to mention at the end, but I think I'll take this opportunity and let them figure out, take a little pressure off them. And we've got a number of our planning staff here. Ms. Larson and I did have an opportunity to attend the NACO conference this past week, and, you know, in front of probably 2,000 or 3,000 people and hundreds of other counties from across the country, our planning department was recognized for the best-in-class for planning, and it was for our 2045 comprehensive plan. But a couple of things. One, for me, it reaffirms the quality of our staff. As you said, we get awards in a lot of categories, and it just reaffirms that we have a really high-caliber staff serving our community. So I'm very proud of that. For Ms. Larson and I to walk out on stage and hear James City County in front of that room and recognition that we were receiving, we were all smiles and really happy to be there in both cases. We happened to be there for one of the awards that Patrick will talk about, and one from the planning side. But really, really want to say thank you to our staff, to tell our community, we really are a first-class place, and these kinds of things say that. When you compete on a national basis and are recognized that way, it really does a great job. I would like to just say thanks to our planning staff while they're here, and give them a round of applause, and then we'll probably have a secondary one with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. This afternoon, it's my privilege to provide you with an overview of awards and recognition received by James City County and the Information Resources Management staff. First, for our website, Communicator Awards, Award of Distinction, Overall Government Website, Website Elements, Web Structure and Navigation, Hermes Awards, Golden Hermes, Overall Government Website, Employee Portal, and Website Redesign. AVA Digital Awards, Gold, Web-Based Production, Government Website, Honorable Mention, Web-Based Production, Website Redesign. For our County Video Services, Communicator Awards, Award of Excellence, Government Relations, The Story of James City County's First 3D Printed House, Information, 3D Printed House, Construction, Timelapse, Video. Communicator Awards, Award of Distinction, Videography, Cinematography, The Story of James City County's First 3D House, Direct Marketing, Glass-Only Recycling, Government Relations, Voting in James City County, and Recruitment, Join JCCPD Today. Telly Awards, Silver Telly, Government Relations, The Story of James City County's First 3D Printed House, Telly Awards, Bronze Telly, Sustainability, Glass-Only Recycling, Videography, Cinematography, The Story of James City County's First 3D Printed House, and Government Relations, Voting in James City County. And Hometown Media Awards, Government Activities, Glass-Only Recycling. And Hometown Media Awards, Government Activities, Glass-Only Recycling. And finally, the entire Information Resources Management Department, recognition for a twenty twenty-three digital county survey ranked fourth nationally in up to one hundred fifty thousand population category. We were recognized for our work in business intelligence systems with projects involving fire department and EMS staff, our cybersecurity planning, preparation, and training, and our website mobility and the use of a chatbot to answer citizens' questions. The survey was a department-wide effort involving all divisions. All of these awards and recognition, they bring as possible through the efforts of IRM staff, the departments we support, and the citizens we serve. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions or comments?
Just a huge congratulations, that's a tremendous amount of work, so big thank you to you and your staff.
They've done a fantastic job in telling the story of James City County. And I think that that's really important for our citizens to know.
There's a lot of times that that we in James City County staff and the board don't spend enough time recognizing what what gets done and what's done for our citizens. And and this is a good opportunity, and the awards that we receive, and and it's nationally. So it's not just something that is in our backyard. We're being recognized and put up against other communities of our size or bigger. And we're putting out such quality that we're being recognized across the United States. That's that says a lot for the team in James City County and what they're doing. I think sometimes we don't promote it enough to the citizens about what our staff is doing in James City County and how well they do their job. I was surprised with all the awards, there wasn't one of the, you know, Board of Supervisors meeting.
Next year.
I would have thought that would have been right there.
Youthful up here on the country.
I was gonna say that if there's any anything they should win an award for was the excellent job you guys did of putting together the the Christmas messages that we, when we record those and I say, I can't wait to see how they put these clips together. You really do a phenomenal job in communicating with the public, so my congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I could just echo that, I know we're recognizing at least planning and our IRM staff today. But as you know, we get that in many of our departments. And I just want to restate to our citizens, you really have a talented, dedicated staff serving this community. And they like what they do, they're good at what they do, and these awards really solidify what we already believe and know. So I want to say thank you to our staff and for those that are doing the work, and then the work that it takes to submit for the award, because that's a secondary effort too. But thank you to both departments in this case and those working with you.
And we should do a picture for our website with the board, anybody?
That would be good for me.
The staff?
Yeah. Yeah. Do an IRM one and do a planning one.
Okay.
That'd be great. We got a few that broken, correct?
I'm gonna come get in the staff.
Yes.
Are we doing, oh.
And and I, Mr. Chairman, I just mentioned also that Jack Caldeman, who's on our planning commission, was an active member of that comprehensive plan process as well.
Yeah, stay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't like getting the podium in there. Have to get everybody in a little bit. Little more, Thomas.
Are we sitting now? Are we sitting now?
Not bad for an afternoon. All right, we'll move right on into consent calendars. Today's consent calendar consists of contract award of four hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred and fifty to James City County Marina Floating Dock Extension, contract award of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven for the James City County Recreation Center Bowler Replacement, contract award of seven hundred sixty-two thousand, four hundred and six dollars and seventy-four cents to the MicroSoft Enterprise Software Agreement, grant award for nine thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars for Chesapeake Bay Restoration Fund Grant, contract award for one hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and thirty-two to Commonwealth Attorneys Victims Witness Assistant Program, contract award for forty-one thousand, thirty dollars to Commonwealth Attorneys, Virginia Domestic Violence Victims Fund, Minutes for Adoption, Official Internet to reimburse or intent to reimburse expenditures or proceeds from a borrowing, Old Town Medical and Dental Center, Part-Time to Full-Time Positions, Resolution to Support for Transportation Alternatives Funding Applications, Reservation to the County Administrator's Contract of Employment and the Virginia Department of Transportation Revenue Share Program fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. Are there any items anyone wishes to pull, or may I have a motion?
I would like to pull item number twelve for just a brief discussion, if you don't mind.
Number twelve, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
I don't wish to pull anything, but I I just want to say, I want to recognize that Erin Thompson is here, Executive Director, Old Town Medical Dental Center, Nate Green, Carla, Alistair. A lot of people come out when we do these in cases, questions for the grants. And I just want to say thank you to everyone that comes out for that. I just want to say, there's a lot of important things that are in here and a lot of good works. So I hope people will take time to look at them and and see, we've got a lot going on. And I just appreciate everybody that had something to do with with all of that, because there's a lot of work that's gonna come from that, so, yep.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor for all of them, but number twelve, which we pulled. Roll call, please.
Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right, Jim, number twelve.
Yeah, I just want to pull that for highlighting one thing here. And I thought, first of all, this is a very comprehensive and good, you know, the share program here, and a lot of good projects on it. The one that sort of got my attention, that I want to make sure that the public is aware of what we have identified as a problem and how we're working to try to resolve it going forward, is the fact that there were some of our streets that never got put into the VDOT system. And this is another one of those cases where the Skiff's Creek Industrial Park Improvement, constructed by private developers several decades ago, but unfortunately were never turned over to VDOT. And basically, we're having to do some upgrade, be able to get them in condition for VDOT to accept them. When this occurred in the past, I had asked staff to identify, if they could, because we've had several of them, to identify if we had a way of tracking and finding out exactly what we were facing. I think I believe staff has done that, and I'd like to basically ask Mr. Holt to recap, you know, to recap exactly what we're looking, because I believe we're gonna be looking at several more of these coming forward to try to get them all cleaned up. So for me, I think it's us working with staff to try to make sure we identify all of these, get them cleaned up, and try to set in place procedures so that we don't, this doesn't continue to occur for us going forward in the future. Because it's a little unpleasant when you get these kinds of bills that should have been paid by a developer a long time ago.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This really was an idea that we're putting forth to try to get this done using some of the innovative concepts that, quite frankly, the board has enabled us to do, both with transportation match. And if you remember, a while back, the the board had provided staff some additional resources that we could use to better get out of, better get at these and to try to get these roads finally turned over to the system. This one is a bit unique. We do have a situation where, you know, these lots were plotted back in ninety-eight. I think this this industrial park was was constructed somewhere around two thousand. We had surety on it at the time. We're really at a point now with twenty years' worth of age and twenty years' worth of construction inflation, where that surety amount is no longer adequate. Fortunately, we are unique with this one. I say fortunately, there is no developer left to be able to complete this. And being able to sort of leverage this VDOT program, which will pay for fifty percent of the cost of getting these roads into the system, will go a long way to help us resolve that. Big-picture-wise, we do have quite a few. We have been able to get in and prioritize, and really sort of starting with some of the most aged product, projects out there that we're still holding surety on. We are currently at the community development staff level administratively. I mean, we're we're currently actively working on twenty-five, twenty-six different projects countywide, totaling a surety amount, trying to get that resolved at about five point six million. County Attorney's Office alone has a different set of applications that we've had to bump up to the court-level action to do the surety draw. Their office is working on about fifteen different applications with a total surety amount value of about one point seven million. Since we've been able to have these additional resources, staff has cleared out to date about one point six million off of the list. Unfortunately, we have more, but we're gonna keep prioritizing and maximizing the use of staff resources and leverage as many of these outside funds as we can.
And I thank you for that recap, because I think it's important. I want to congratulate staff, because when we had started this, we had no idea exactly what all was out there. And now I feel more comfortable, at least knowing the the level that we're facing and and also the fact that we're able to creatively use some of these other funding to try to help resolve some of that. And the big thing for me is that if staff feels that there is a need for any additional resources to help us design and operate a system that precludes this from happening in the future, that's really important. So I urge you not to not to hesitate when you feel you need those resources. And with that, I'll move the approval of number twelve.
All right, we have a motion for approval of number twelve. Roll call.
Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right, more discussions, number one, ORD dash twenty-two, dash zero 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 one, Amendment to the Scenic Roadway Protection. Thomas?
Thank you. Good afternoon to the board, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today. The potential ordinance amendment for discussion today is intended to help achieve protection and preservation of the county's scenic roadways, which will in turn help retain the character of the rural lands. There is a GSA in the two thousand forty-five comprehensive plan specific to this ordinance amendment, and the board adopted an initiating resolution in late two thousand and twenty-one to explore implementing this. At its May meeting, the Board of Supervisors requested staff to do the following. Analyze the properties that abut Old Stage Road to determine which ones are developed and which ones are undeveloped, as well as which ones can be subdivided and which ones cannot be subdivided, and to what degree. And to analyze the impact of the proposed setback options on existing homes and structures on Old Stage Road. The major takeaways from this analysis is that there are forty lots that are abutting Old Stage Road. Thirty-four of them are developed, meaning they have single-family residences on them, and six of them are undeveloped. Thirty-eight of these lots would be subject to the minimum lot-size requirement of three acres for residential subdivisions. And two of them would be subject to the size requirement of twenty acres for residential subdivisions. Of those thirty-eight parcels with a three-acre minimum, thirty cannot be subdivided because they don't have the minimum acreage requirement. And eight would have the minimum acreage requirement that would permit subdivision. All eight of those parcels do front on Old Stage Road and can potentially create lots that have frontage on Old Stage Road. Of the two parcels with a twenty-acre minimum, only one can be subdivided and does have potential lot creation directly fronting on Old Stage Road. Based on the scenarios and questions that were raised by the board at the May meeting, staff has provided an additional edit and clarification to revise the setback concept to ensure that shallor lots do not have their building envelope eliminated by the proposed setback. This addition would allow for lots with a depth of three hundred feet or less to have the seventy-five-foot setback requirement, lots with a depth between three hundred feet and five hundred feet to have a setback requirement of two hundred feet, and lots with a depth greater than five hundred feet to have the four hundred-foot setback. Now, of the forty parcels on abutting Old Stage Road, nineteen have a depth greater than five hundred feet, twelve have a depth between five hundred and three hundred and one feet, and nine parcels have a depth of three hundred feet or less. A total of twenty-five residences would be located within the proposed setback, along with thirty-one accessory structures. And that is a lot of information to go through, so staff has prepared maps that show this parcel information. This first map is showing the undeveloped parcels versus the developed parcels. As you can see, the developed parcels are in blue, and the undeveloped parcels are in pink. And as you can see, the majority of parcels have been developed with single-family homes. This next map shows the minimum lot-size requirements for the existing parcels, as well as their ability to be subdivided. So the two green parcels to the north, near the new Kent County line, those have a minimum lot size of twenty acres. The parcel to the east on the right is thatched in, and that means that it can be subdivided. The one to the left cannot be. The orange parcels have a minimum lot size of three acres, and the thatched-in parcels are the ones that can be subdivided, while the ones that are not thatched in cannot be subdivided. And the board had also requested just some background information on the AFD program in this area. And these are the parcels that are enrolled in the Barn Swamp AFD. Now, if a parcel becomes non-conforming, or rather, a structure becomes non-conforming, the setback would not require the structure to be removed, and the use of the property would not be prohibited. So if you were a single-family homeowner and your house were to become non-conforming, you could still live in your house, the county would not require you to make alterations. And even if you wanted to expand your house, you'd be permitted to do that, provided that you don't move further into the setback. And here we have a map that shows the different setback requirements that would be in place should this option be pursued, with the green showing the seventy-five-foot setback, the purple or pink showing a two-hundred-foot setback, and the beige showing the four-hundred-foot setback. So those are tailored to the lot depths based on the analysis we did using GIS. And for some more context, here is the visual aids that the consultant group put together for us. This is showing seventy-five feet from the edge of the right-of-way for Old Stage Road, what houses could look like at that distance. And then this shows two hundred feet from the right-of-way. And this finally shows four hundred feet from the right-of-way. So for the options moving forward, the first option is the setback scheme that staff has presented today, and this is what we would recommend. We find that this helps achieve the objective of the ordinance amendment without unduly creating lawful nonconformities. The second option would be the proposed creation of an overlay district. Once created, the board would have the option to direct staff to rezone different corridors to that zoning district. And in that option, each corridor could have its own unique standards. Whereas in option number one, what we do for Old Stage Road has to occur for Forge Road, which was the other scenic roadway in this category. Option number three is a community character corridor designation change. This would be a proposed reevaluation of the CCCs during the next scheduled comprehensive plan update, which could be followed by revisiting setback standards. And of course, the fourth option is to do no change at this time. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I appreciate your time very much.
Questions?
Refresh, refresh my, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Refresh my memory. You were bringing this back to us on on Old Stage Road. There was no issue with the, the Forge Road with those those proposed depth didn't create the same level of problem?
That's correct. Our impression from you all was that Old Stage Road was the one to focus on.
Did we have any that would be, on on Forge Road, that these these buffers? Did we have any that would be, on Forge Road, that these buffers would make any of the structures non-conforming?
I believe it would. I don't have the exact number in front of me today.
It was not nearly as many as it was on Old Stage.
I don't believe so. I think Old Stage was more the issue because there's so many shallower lots.
My concern long-term is that, I know we say that it wouldn't affect anybody who would be non-conforming. My concern would be for the future. We say that now. I'm just concerned about long-term how that would affect people. I think, based on our conversation last time, seemed like Old Stage and Forge Road are a little bit different. It was like apples and oranges. I prefer to look at option three and perhaps do a change to the comprehensive plan so that we can perhaps remove that designation, because I think it's going to be, based on the number of residents it's going to affect, I think it's going to be a little more cumbersome for people to be able to use their property there. I think, I don't recall there being any concern about Forge Road from anybody. I could be, I'm not speaking for anyone else. I don't have a problem with Forge Road at all, but this one, it affected too many people, and I think it, I think it... I'm reading this here. I prefer to go ahead and try to get that to reevaluate at the next comprehensive plan. And now, I don't know if we need to do an amendment ahead of time because the comp plan is going to be a while before that takes effect. I don't know how this timeline would affect things overlap. I don't know how that would work. And perhaps you could share your thoughts on that, but I, one way or another, I would like to see a comp plan change one way or another, be it amendment now or something later.
I'll have Paul speak to the timeline.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Holt.
We'll certainly defer to the will of the board as always. I think technically, legally, you do have the option to do an off-cycle comprehensive plan amendment by initiating resolution. Process is similar to getting that started as you would a zoning ordinance amendment. Don't know that we've historically done those. There's probably pros and cons, but you could do it at the next one, which would be staff's recommendation, or you could do an off-cycle.
So if, so if we just, how do we know that that's going to take place, though?
You mean in terms of the next?
The next cycle. How do we know? Would it be our recommendation that that go forward? Or how does that work?
You know, really, so, you know, it can be one of two things. You know, either staff can, if that's the consensus of the board today for the comp plan, which will probably start in the next couple of years. You know, staff will, can either just sort of take that away verbally today. The board could memorialize that in terms of board-provided direction, that that be included as one of the work elements. Either way, it'll be on our list to look at and bring forward.
Why is it your recommendation to do that rather than do an off, what did you call it, off-year amendment?
An off-year amendment?
Yeah.
You know, again, just a couple of things off the top of my head here. Again, I don't know that we've historically done off-cycle amendments. Certainly, when you look to adjust a plan, your 25, 30, 35-year plan, you are looking out quite a bit. Things could change. There's probably lots of other things in the comp plan that could be adjusted off-cycle. I think the benefit of looking, the couple of the initial benefits that really in order, when you look at those on a five-year basis, is that you are focusing on your largest growth management tool, your land use policies. You are focusing on all of those from a long-range perspective, really sort of all at the same time. There are a lot of these things that work in tandem with other things, you know, CCC corridor, CCC areas, they all tie into the primary service area, they all tie into the land use chapter, they all tie into development standards. And so when you take one item uniquely, you could potentially start to look at things without the benefit of looking at them in the context of everything else. A change in the comprehensive plan does require public hearings, much like, again, much like a zoning ordinance. When you take a specific item individually, even though you are still doing a public hearing with the planning commission, still doing a public hearing with the Board of Supervisors, it is not the same level of, in totality, the public engagement that occurs when you do a comprehensive plan update. You know, that public input, sort of looking at things big picture, that typically is going to occur over a two-year timeline, 18-month, two-year timeline. So it's just a different context. And again, you're looking at one item in particular versus looking at your future land use policies as a whole, within the context of the whole process that comes with it. So there's just a couple of things right off the top of my head, but...
Oh, a couple of questions. The, so both these roads go together?
Correct.
They're both linked, so we can't do one and not the other?
Correct. Not under option one. You'd have to look at option number two to do them separate, but for a comp plan change.
Right, and then we have to do a comp plan change and an overlay district and add those without looking at...
Do the comp plan change, you can, you can look at just Forge Road by itself.
If we were to do proposal one for Forge Road, and of course, it would go in Old Stage as well, but then advise staff that at the next comp plan, we want to look further into Old Stage as far as, is that too much on Old Stage? But as it is for right now, to move Forge Road forward, we'd put this in place, but advise staff that during the next comp plan, we want to look at Old Stage and what the planning department or planning group would tell us, hey, this is a better route to move forward than what we're with right now. Because, you know, with the zoning and all that, we're limited on, unless we go back and redo part of the comp plan. If we leave the comp plan like it is and leave that on the cycle it is, and put this into place, even though it'd be a little more stringent on Old Stage Road, we could then advise, when we come back to the next comp plan, let's look at this wording differently from direction, from the planning that says, this is what we should look at for Old Stage Road. Would that work?
Yeah, so again, it's really a matter of timing. So let's set aside for a moment a, an off-cycle CCC designation change. If the proposed ordinance amendment were to be implemented today, it would, it would apply to both Forge Road and Old Stage Road. At such point, again, timing-wise, at such point, the comp plan was changed, or should that change be incorporated into the next adoption of the comprehensive plan update to two and a half, three years, whatever that timeframe may be, and Old Stage comes off, at that point, those regulations would no longer apply to Old Stage Road.
That would probably...
Because the designation has been changed.
Right, and I would, hopefully it doesn't get anybody in the process of this movement, but I would think it would be better to move in that direction and as we normally move through all our processes, that that would, that would be a better move than trying to go in and change the comp plan and change designations and how does this connect to this, to this, to this? Because it's not, you know, I think of it as, we'll just change that one thing, but it's not. I know there's a lot more to it than that, and there's a lot more planning that goes into, what does this do when we change this, and how does this connect to this piece? So if we, if we put it all in one today and then said during our next visit to the comp plan, that we pull out Old Stage and look at that differently, it might be another criteria that comes before for Old Stage that says, let's look at this, or let's do a way that all together, but we look at our planning team to bring that forward to us to give us the advice.
Correct, because at that point, at whatever point, the reference no longer applies, then the enhanced setback no longer applies.
My concern with, with doing it this way is once we get, once it's set in there, it's hard to undo. And then that, it sounds like that ties those folks up between now and that process time, does it not? In terms of if they want to do anything with their property.
That would otherwise not be covered by the, by the proposed text of the nonconforming piece. And so, again, in summary, staff, staff and the policy committee had recommended to add very good clarity into the draft ordinance, proposed ordinance, draft language, that with an enhanced setback, you could continue to add on to your home, put on additions, add on to decks, to the side or rear. As long as you're not building closer to the road, you can continue to add on to and expand your home, your existing home.
So are the, are the residents out there aware of this?
No, because, again, right now, it's just been for discussion purposes. We have not triggered the public hearing process yet for the formal ordinance amendment. All that would still need to come forward and still need to go through the process. This has really been sort of getting the framework with which to better understand the direction that we'll proceed, or you would like us to proceed.
So you want us to tell you whether we want, you want us to go with one, two, three, or four?
Correct.
Yeah, and that, that's, the difficult piece of that is knowing, you know, without hearing from people that live out there. I mean, well, but what if we, yeah, we're going to go with one, and then we get 1,000 people that come out here, and then we say, oh, nope, we're going to go with three. That's always possible.
Absolutely, it is.
Yeah.
Absolutely, that's possible. You can send us back to the drawing board.
Okay.
Again, there's, there's, there's no affirmative action. You all are taking data. It's really just staff direction. At that point, we, it would help us to better start the process, which would include a more robust public.
And this would just say, we're looking in this direction, but we're going to set a public hearing out to listen to what the neighbors and anyone may say. But, you know, and it all started with protection of Forge Road. Old Stage just happens to be in that same thing. And that's why I was saying, at the next comp plan, pulling Old Stage out and separating the two, we'd still have the protection on Forge Road.
And with that direction, obviously, as we, as, should the board desire staff to move into the public hearing process, we could very much, much better articulate that within the staff report. And there would be, as with any ordinance amendment, there would be a minimum of two public hearings, one with the planning commission and another one with the Board of Supervisors.
Our biggest piece on Stage Road is in the AFD right now that would have more change.
Yeah, based on those maps and some of the ones at the end there.
And that would take a while to get out of that if they wanted to bring anything forward, plus by the time they plan and everything else, you know, you're into that two-year process.
Unless they come out off-cycle. Those were just all renewed in '22, so they wouldn't be back to you normally for the four-year cycle until '26.
By then, we're into the comp plan as well. Right?
So once we're doing the comp plan process, the next go-around, and you're dealing with, I don't know, a document this thick, as we all know, how are these folks going to know that their little, their little piece of James City County is going to be directly affected? I mean, are you going to send out notifications just to them?
We don't send out, as part of a comp plan update, we don't send out notifications to just them. Again, because the comprehensive plan update is countywide, and there are lots, and at the end of the day, there are recommendations, there are policy decisions. And because they're ultimately, quite frankly, in the comp plan, there's a little something that could affect a little bit of all of us, it doesn't become really practical at that point for, you know, all of those 400 GSA's to figure out which one's going to affect who and send out those individualized notifications.
That's my concern, that if we don't do something now, they're going to get lost on a little sentence in a document two years from now, from now, and my preference would be to take care of it now.
So, so if I can understand, isn't that what number one is doing? In the sense that, you know, we would be giving clear indication that these are the expectations and these are also the conditions that would apply, that if you want to do an addition on your house, as long as you don't move it forward on to the property, you can do that. It gives more clear guidance to folks while we make a determination later on whether the comp plan process results in a different approach to that. So I guess in some ways, it seems to me that the first option is providing guidance and protection for property owners while, until we get to a more comprehensive decision.
And if we say number one, and then we, like I said, we get the outcry, we can switch gears.
Absolutely.
And with number one, those individuals whose properties would be affected would be notified individually?
No, he said they would not.
That was, so, I'd work with the attorney's office, and to clarify and again, apologize if I'd confused the situation, with a comprehensive plan update.
Right.
We don't send out those, those, you know, state code is specific on an ordinance about how many parcels are affected. We'd have to look back at the specifics of the state code requirements. You know, again, as we've seen with some of these other ordinance amendments, sometimes it dictates that every affected landowner gets a letter, and sometimes those triggers are not met. So we, if number one is the consensus today and we move down that path, we would only, we would not only develop the clarifying text, we would confirm that process and look at state code.
My, my concern still, I mean, we've, we've taken great strides to do a lot of land protection here in the county, and I, I'm concerned they were constantly whittling away, and I just, I still, my preference is to go ahead and take care of this now so that the people can be aware and move forward from there. I, I don't think Old Stage and Forge Road, as I said, I think it's apples and oranges in terms of the character corridor. I just don't think it equates. So I still would prefer to go ahead and, and do an evaluation now, reevaluation of the, that particular piece of the comp plan.
I, let me, wait, when I look at these four choices, I immediately say, okay, we have a target. The target is Forge Road. We have a, if you will, a land use weapon that we're going to employ, and what I'm concerned about is collateral damage, because Old Stage Road is not the target, but it's drawn into it because of this. So I'm okay using the number one approach on Forge Road, but I'm not okay with putting that restriction on the people on Old Stage Road, because if we do it and say, oh, don't worry about it, we'll take care of it in the comp plan in a couple of years from now, we're from the government, we're here to help you, you know? There's not a whole lot of trust there. And you know what? If I'm one of those property owners out there, I would be a little leery myself as well. So I agree with Sue in one respect. As I said, if we're going to do something, we need to basically separate the two. And the way to do it is, I think, to give the staff either the option of two or three, either an overlay district, so you can hit the target you're trying to hit and not hit the target you're, you don't want to hit, or do the, number three, as an off-cycle change. And I'm not as concerned about the fact that we're, if we do that, I think we basically, we say, hey, there are a couple of things that I don't think are big conceptual problems, but there are minor technical problems that are creating issues for some of our property holders, property owners, that we need to fix in that. I think there's more than one. I think that, we take a look at some of the things that were mentioned about the Airbnb. So I think it would be appropriate for us to do the change at this time, because I'm not willing to hold the folks on Old Stage Road hostage for three years when we don't need to. We don't need to. But we do need to apply those standards to Forge Road. So we're given sort of, the fact that we're sort of, we're in this is because it's all tied together in a comp plan, and the way to fix it, I think, is to go back to the comp plan and undo that particular piece. Pull Forge Road out, or, you know, leave Forge Road in and pull Old Stage out, so that now you can target this particular setback toward the area you are really interested in, but not adversely affect the people on Old Stage Road. So I'm very, I'm, I'm not comfortable applying the setbacks to both at this time. And I, yeah, and I know, you know, that we would probably get into the situation where we would have a lot of people coming forth to speak, but I'm not, I don't even think we even need to go there. I think we can solve a lot of our problems. We're going to get people come forth, talk about it on Forge Road anyway, when we have, apply these standards to... when we have, apply these standards to Ford Road. But I think the, the solution is for us to do an, ask staff to do an initiating resolution to, to go sever that knot and then, and treat these two things separately.
I agree.
How much time would it take to do either two or three, roughly?
You know, again, the process is generally the same, because either one, you're working through a, a public hearing process that requires review by both the planning commission and board. So, you know, we would be into this fall most likely. Yeah. Don't have an exact timeframe, but there's, from a timeline point of view and the notification and working through state code, and again, the fact that the heart of them, they are both public hearing item-driven, not going to be a huge difference between the options.
Sounds like the board is looking at probably two or three in preference over, over three.
I prefer three.
Three.
Three, three.
He's fine.
Looking at three. All right, well, let's see, then, I guess we just need.
Do we need an initiating resolution then?
Yeah, but it sounds like that's the consensus. I think staff can take that as our direction today, but for anything else you'd like us to work on in the interim, and we will be back soon.
We came up with something.
We always do. It's all good.
Thank you, team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, next, we're going to large-scale solar farms. Ellen? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, members of the board. At its meeting on March 14th and April 11th, 2023, the Board of Supervisors discussed solar farm application reviews and a desire to pursue three solar farm-related goals in the adopted natural and cultural assets plan, which pertain to habitat and cultural resources, high-value agricultural soils, and stormwater management. The board directed staff to begin an analysis of these goals and to present information at today's meeting. To assist in this analysis, the county has contracted with the Berkeley Group, a local governmental consulting firm with experience providing land use planning services to local and government, regional governments, including renewable energy and land uses. With us today is Mr. Michael Zainer, Director of Planning and Community Development for the Berkeley Group, who will provide a presentation and items for board feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Glad to be with you. Appreciated working with your staff, I think, over the last month and a half. Again, as Ellen introduced me, Michael Zainer, Director of Planning and Community Development with the Berkeley Group. Today, I'll walk you through a presentation, try to be as brief as I can, 10 to 15 minutes. I know I want to reserve a lot of time for your feedback and discussion, and I think that gives me approximately a little more than 30 seconds per slide, so let me go ahead. There we go. So a little bit about us. As Ellen indicated, we're a consulting firm. All of our clients are government, local governments, regional governments, in some cases, state governments, a variety of services. But I work with the planning and community development teams, long-range and, and current planning. And we're heavily involved in, in working with localities in Virginia, as well as in Kansas and Colorado, working on utility-scale solar projects. And in addition to you all, we work with two other localities in Virginia presently, helping to develop policies, if not regulations, for solar and wind. And we've also are heavily involved in third-party reviews, approximately a dozen counties presently in Virginia, as well as one in Colorado, that we're assisting, and we assist with the review of utility-scale solar projects. And so I think that's why we were selected to work with you, because of that base knowledge that we've been working in that field for, for approximately a decade, assisting localities in Virginia. So session goals today, we certainly want to identify areas where you need additional information, whether that's around policy or regulatory issues or topics. We want to understand your perspectives regarding the use, principal opportunities, or areas of concern that you have, because those, those will help obviously inform policies, if not also regulatory amendments, or recommendations for regulatory amendments. And we want to seek input from you on potential policy and regulatory provisions that are both more or less important, and understand those as well. So a little context, when we talk about utility-scale solar, we're talking about generally facilities that are 1 megawatts in generating capacity and greater. And usually, a good rule of thumb, and there's a sliding scale here, 1 megawatt needs approximately 10 acres for siting. And when I say that, that's not just the panel area, but that's the entire project area. And I was just looking to update myself, but approximately 1 megawatt, the national average, that would power 173 homes. In Virginia, and there's a sliding scale, given a lot of different factors, but in Virginia, it's only approximately an average of a little bit over 100 homes that that would power 1 megawatt. So nationally, we want to set some context. Fastest-growing energy source in the world. You can see here on the slide how, how that has changed. Obviously, in Virginia, there's been a couple of factors, the 2020 Clean Energy Act, the most recent required both Dominion and AEP to produce 100% of electricity from renewable sources by 2045 and 2050 respectively. And that's based on a capacity of 16,100 megawatts, and that's both solar and wind. And that 16,100, essentially, if you were to read the statute, it would tell you that that is determined to be in the public's interest, that, that amount of production. The map here on the right, this is out of a report prepared by UVA, as well as the Virginia Department of Energy, and just shows active nameplate capacity of projects. And this is dated, obviously, it goes back to December 31st of 2021. You would certainly see more dots on this map at present. So in, in conducting our review, we certainly looked at existing policies, existing regulatory documents that the county has, the county's comprehensive plan. I would say, yes, it touches on solar and renewable, but minimally so, not really in specifics. But certainly, your natural and cultural assets plan does, gives you, gives us a lot of good goals and objectives and recommendations. Certainly, probably the reason we're here today is because of those goals, objectives, and recommendations from that plan. Your zoning ordinance at present, I believe it regulates it. Solar broadly, as an electrical generation facility, requires a special use permit allowed in every zoning district. And that's something that I think you'll want to dive into a little bit deeper, and we certainly touch on here. Your stormwater management, Chesapeake Bay preservation ordinance is standard, based on the regulations that exist. They certainly would regulate utility-scale projects, given the expected development. So what are we talking about when we talk about policy? What are the considerations in this? Could probably be regulatory considerations as well, because certainly, the policy decisions inform the regulatory decisions. Solar is a unique land use, utility-scale solar. It's very land-dependent, obviously. We believe it has specific impacts that communities are concerned about and want to make sure are addressed in policies, if not regulations. Certainly, the siting of these, a lot of communities would prefer they be on industrial lands, if not brownfields or landfills and the like. But most often, because of a variety of factors, they're sited on open land, ag land, timbered land, forested lands, lands that are positioned well from an interest standpoint, from the development community, from maybe their lack of, of competing development interests, but also, which also relates to the price of that land. And that's most often what we see. Because of that, we believe they require unique standards that communities want to consider, and, and I'll speak to a few of those here. And I, I didn't reference, but we gave you a memo that hopefully covered all of this in depth. I'm happy at the end, when we discuss this, to go back on any slides that I don't give enough time to, or any of the topics that are discussed in the memo as well. So usually, it's a change in land use, and a lot of communities qualify salt, utility-scale solar development as an industrial use, especially when compared to the agricultural use or forested use of land or undeveloped use of land. It doesn't often compete with residential use. We do see some projects that are sited in industrial areas, but we also understand that communities often want to preserve those areas for job creation, more direct economic development, rather than just the sitting of a solar facility. But again, it doesn't necessarily compete with residential development, but we do see often where it can be developed in a way that, that impacts residential development and existing residential development principally. And obviously, the impact that it may have to future use of ag land, land that has been used for agricultural uses, but lands that could possibly be used for agricultural uses and, as well as forested land. Infrastructure, environmental, and visual concerns, certainly during the construction stage, impacts to roadways and traffic safety. Construction mitigation is very important. Reduction of wildlife mobility, the alteration of existing topography and terraforming associated with the development stages, impacts to soil conditions, removal of topsoil and the like, and compaction. Erosion and sedimentation impacts, impacts to water quality, both water quality issues as well as water quantity issues, removal of existing forested and ag areas, as, as I mentioned, and the potential for contamination. Although I think the, the best research on that would not point to significant concern for that, but we do also recommend that damaged panels, malfunctioning panels, that they not be stored on site, that they, there be a plan of action for removing those materials from site. Aesthetic reasons, but also for potential concerns for contamination as well. Obvious visual impacts, you know, changes to the rural character, where you have potentially an agricultural use or an undeveloped open land or, or far, excuse me, forested land. You know, solar facilities may not, depending on the topography, have significant visual impacts, but then they can. So we often look at buffering and screening, the image on the top, and then the image on the bottom. The image on the bottom shows a photo simulation of, of a screening, buffering area once it's grown to a better, you know, after it's been planted, and what that may look like and how it may screen that site. Protection of scenic view sheds, there could be certainly areas in the community, whether it be a scenic road or a scenic view, that the community wishes to protect and, and create some value for that with respect to policies for solar. Agricultural impacts, soil compaction, usually associated with the development of the, of the facility, the impacts that that can have on future use for ag purposes, but also impacts that it can have in the short term on, on stormwater conditions. Removal of topsoil is also an, an area of concern, that the facility itself can occupy large areas of land for up to 40 years. In a lot of ways, I think about this as, as the development of a subdivision, where no one expects that subdivision to go away anytime soon. And you've essentially, depending on the size of a project, removed development potential or other preservation potential of that land for a significant number of years. Projects can, due to other, due to soil compaction and other conditions, they can impact future reversion of agricultural uses. But again, I, I have difficulty thinking, I have difficulty thinking a year from now. I have a huge difficulty thinking 30 years, 40 years from now about the reversion of these properties. And, and part of me wonders, yes, we require decommissioning, but is it likely that they be converted back into some other use from solar once they've been developed? Those are things that we, we talk about and consider often. Alteration of site topography that can impact stormwater flow and water infiltration. But there are options for agrivoltaics, which is the combining of agricultural uses and solar facilities. I think we, we see that often. I wouldn't say that everyone refers to it as agrivoltaics, but we often see farms or portions of farms that may be leased to a solar developer while the farm use continues on the bulk of the property. That's often, we do see that often. Stormwater management, very important. The panels create semi-permeable cover, and we talk about in our report, new regulations that, that will be coming in place from DEQ, but also studies that are being done on the, on the preservation of ag or the consideration of ag impacts and forested land impacts. Soil compaction, I mentioned, can create infiltration coefficients that are similar to concrete, where water cannot infiltrate into those areas. Planning for stormwater and sediment basins, retaining existing vegetation on site, enhancing setbacks from, from wetlands, restricting total development until sites and soils are stabilized, and requiring native and pollinator-friendly plantings. And then decommissioning, taking into account the facility lifespan. This decommissioning, by the way, is a requirement under state statutes, whether you're addressing it in your regulations or in individual permits, that, that is something that's going to be required for utility-scale projects, that decommissioning is addressed. Usually, that requires the applicant to submit a decommissioning plan and then subsequent charities to ensure sufficient financial resources to decommission that facility. Disposal impacts and recycling, these are areas where there's not a lot of information. There, I think, I, I can't say that this is 100% true, but there's not yet been a utility-scale solar project that's been fully decommissioned and, and removed. And I think these are areas where there's a lot of research ongoing about disposal and reuse of these, this equipment. Requirements for applicants, as I indicated, decommissioning plan, a cost estimate, bonds, and security. So policy best practices. We want to understand from you to help us inform in, in drafting any policy, the appropriateness in particular locations, areas. Want to understand community input regarding facilities. Presumably, presumably, you want to continue allowing for these, but what's the best way to allow for them in your community? Taking into account design of facility, facilities, the siting, location, areas that are, that are acceptable, areas that are unacceptable, size and scale considerations, taking into account. Should there be a maximum size for an individual facility? Should there be a total aggregate size for all of the facilities that may, may be located in the county? Desired and expected economic outcomes, you know, what are your hopes that a solar facility may generate in terms of work, job creation, or other economic returns associated with them? Acceptable and unacceptable impacts, help defining those in your policy for, to recreational, natural, cultural, and historic resources. The relationship between these uses and ag uses and/or areas suitable for ag, as well as other community development goals, and then potential financial infrastructure, service, and social benefits to the community. We would recommend that all of these things be taken into account. From a regulatory standpoint, we first want to make sure you define the use. We think you should specifically in your regulations define the use of utility-scale solar. Sometimes we do suggest different scales of that, where you may have small, medium, and large scale. And it's also important here to make sure, when we do this, we suggest, well, we want to be very conscious about not precluding accessory solar, roof-mounted solar, or even solar, a, a small solar field that may be associated with a commercial user, and making sure that those are not precluded or that they're able to be developed consistent with county policies and goals. Determine the zoning, where, where is the use allowed in the community? Establish procedures and minimum application content, special use permit, obviously, but the 2232 review process. We normally recommend a two-step process where the 2232 review, and that corresponds with 15.2-2232 of the state code, where you look at whether a project is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Usually, we suggest that that be done first before the planning commission and resolved, and then you go forward with the special use permit. And it gives more transparency to the process, we believe, with the public. Siting agreements is something that, if you have not done, that you should look into doing. Something that's allowable under the statutes, citing agreements with applicants, and there's considerations for when those are considered in the process. And then also revenue share, taking into account the taxing of these, these facilities, whether you're going to collect M and T tax or enter into a revenue share ordinance requirement with these facilities. So just very quickly, regulatory best practices. Minimum distance from municipal boundaries is something that people, that localities look at. Minimum distance from other facilities, minimum distance from identified resources, maximum project area, maximum area of panel coverage, maximum area of panel height, and even maximum area of the lowest edge of the panel, because there's research that shows that if the panel, because there's research that shows that if the panel, if the lowest edge of the panel is too high, it leads to more stormwater runoff, or leads to stormwater runoff creating erosion and sediment issues because of the height. And potentially also maximum rated capacity of facilities. These are all tools that localities look at and consider. Density of facilities, I talked about earlier, either county-wide or within a defined area, some localities will say no more than X amount of acres could be put to this use in the county, others will say no more than a certain percentage of the land within a, let's say, a five-mile radius can be used for this. Some of these regulations, I would never tell you to do all of these things, because some of them are unnecessary, if you do one, you may not need another. For instance, if you say no more than five percent of the, or no more than three percent of the area within a five-mile radius, then you likely don't need a distance separation from facilities that accomplishes that goal or part of that goal. Additional design standards, fencing, fencing height, wildlife corridors, accounting for those, setbacks, buffers, certain setbacks from roadways, certain setbacks from interior property lines, setbacks from residences, those are all considerations. Distances to transmission infrastructure, and I have a map later to show you what that means, but some localities will say that facilities need to be located within, or a portion of the facility needs to be located within one mile or two miles of a transmission infrastructure existing, and a lot of that is to control the predictability about where the facilities can go, but also if there are facilities located greater distances, then there should be expectations for transmission line extensions to connect those facilities. And then groundwater and stormwater standards. And I would say with respect to stormwater, most often we look at, like I said, you have existing regulations on the books that provide some level of sufficiency, but we often look when we're doing third-party review at specific conditions, given the specific circumstances of a project, and may impose additional conditions with respect to stormwater, and I think we speak to that in our report. And then construction mitigation and decommissioning, construction mitigation, understanding phasing, understanding project timelines, where materials are staged, where materials are stored, sometimes they're onsite, sometimes they're offsite, where employees are parking and how they're traveling to sites, what are the transportation routes, you know, certainly considering access points for facilities as well, where those are located, the types of roads that are getting to these sites, all important considerations. And then decommissioning, we usually recommend that that be established as part of a community's ordinance, so that it's clearly, the rules and regulations are clearly established for applicants. And then I talked about this a little bit, but special use permit conditions. A lot of what we suggest is that you create regulations that are that are robust, to have predictability for the public, for the board, for the applicants, so they they know what's allowed and what's not allowed. But you could conceptually deal with any of these things that I've discussed through conditions, through SUP conditions, but if you start to impose the same conditions over and over on a project, then that does beg the question, should there be a regulation that speaks to that? So it's pretty standard and everyone knows what what to expect. So jumping into some maps that have informed us and will continue to inform us and perhaps your decision-making and direction, this map was generated and shows the lighter blue, a one-mile buffer from transmission lines that are present in the county, and then a two-mile buffer, the darker one, so you can get some sense of what that looks like. And again, it's important to mention that usually the way the regulation works is that some portion of the facility has to be within a mile or within two miles, and sometimes those facilities extend greater distances away from those transmission line infrastructure. Agricultural assets, we talked about, you know, this map is developed based on data that was provided by the county, and usually we would see policies that talk about how solar is developed or cited with relation to agricultural assets or forestry assets, and not necessarily precluding development, but but strongly encouraging siting that does not affect negatively these resources. And then also cultural assets, there could be, you know, some basis for any particular cultural asset, especially historical resources, to cite them on appropriate distance away from those resources. So we gave you, I think, a total of eleven questions that you may want to consider, and I think there are three principal questions, and we've given you the question, given you some considerations, I won't read these verbatim, especially the considerations, but the first is, should the county prohibit or limit the development of utility-scale solar that involves the disturbance of prime farmland, prime ag soils and/or lands that have recently been utilized for agricultural production? And there's maybe a variety of things to think about when it comes to a policy with respect to that. Second, should the county limit the disturbance of or establish minimum required distances from historical sites, natural resources, forest blocks, or agricultural and forestal districts? And then lastly, what areas and or zoning districts should solar facilities be allowed in or prohibited in? So certainly don't have to answer those questions, have to answer any of the eleven questions, but hopefully it was food for thought to kind of prompt some direction from you all. I think, you know, as we concluded in our memo, and this with consultation from staff, you know, based on the guidance provided by the board today and following, the following elements could be incorporated into a board policy on utility-scale solar farm projects, you know, guidance based on the comprehensive plan, land use designations in the primary service areas, guidance on resource impacts, criteria by which to evaluate special use permit, use permits and conditions, and other guidance on location of facilities, proximity to transmission lines, other facilities and the like. Other elements could be achieved through zoning ordinance amendments, such as defining the use, updating the use list tables, establishing application supplemental requirements, establishing minimum performance standards such as setbacks and buffers, and identifying construction mitigation and decommissioning requirements. So absent that direction, I think we would work with your staff to move forward with that approach, but I welcome any questions, discussion you have, hopefully that was under fifteen minutes.
Questions?
Yeah, let me, yes, I guess I want to make sure I understand exactly where we go from here. Product that we are supposed to get back after providing our guidance would be a document that outlines your recommendations for board policies and or ordinance changes or things like that. So your document would make recommendations in multiple different areas.
Correct, yes.
Okay. And what's the timeframe that you're looking at bringing that back to us?
So I believe we're committed to providing that back to you for a September meeting. I'm trying to think of the exact date.
Here, we would bring that framework back. Now, when we bring this back, as we mentioned, especially with any suggested or recommended ordinance amendments, those aren't going to be in a form where you all are going to be ready to adopt those that night, right? Because we still have to go through all of the public hearing process and bubble it up through policy committee and planning commission. I think our, the next direct, that next date, which was set forth in that directive in the board resolution, was to, again, between feedback today, feedback we may get from you all over the next week or so, as you work through some of these other secondary, tertiary questions, you know, let us know your framework, your expectations, we will bring back that framework with a set of recommendations about what the details will include, and if that meets your expectations, we will then work to formalize those, bring those back to you in a way that you could consider for adoption, following the public hearing process.
That would be in, the next round would be in September, probably the work session in September is what was set up, okay?
Again, much like with the last issue, some of these very high-level questions, these probably first three, if you want them inside the PSA, outside the PSA, that gets us going in at least a good direction, and then we will make recommendations from there on questions four through eleven, and in September you can tell us if we hit it right or not.
Well, after, after we go through our discussions today, I think you'll get a feel, but one of the things I would encourage my fellow supervisors to do, which I intend to do, is to sit down and put that in a, hopefully, one-page outline of what my recommendations would be, so that you you have a, you know, pretty hard document from, and each of us, I think, has, should maybe take that opportunity to do that, because, you know, I've gone through quite a few things here, there's some things that I don't think are really all that important, or some things I think are very, very important, and I will say that one of the things I think is, at the starting point, is that we would need to take a look at what we have done so far, and I think our staff has done an excellent job of the ones we have approved, of getting better and better at the conditions, and I think that that, those conditions really will will be sort of the the starting point in my mind of whatever policy we need, because that's, that's the primary issues we've been wrestling with to begin with, and as we get forward, go forward, I think that'll, that'll be helpful. I think one of the things, just so you, from my personal standpoint, just so that you, I think solar in this county has a place. I don't think large-scale solar does, we are a very treed area. So far, everything that's come forward to us has been pretty much in agricultural lands that have been cleared, minimal disturbance of trees and stuff, and and small sites that are well-screened, and I think those are, those are the right, right there, the first couple, two or three things. I don't want to see it when I drive by, I don't think any of our residents do. We've got quite a few where you drive by, you don't even know they're there, okay? I don't think that our topography and our, everything lends itself to any of the much larger ones, so we may want to focus on on the smaller ones. And, you know, there's some, I'll provide to everybody as well, when I provide you my document, the, some of the concerns that I have, and I think we just need to make it very clear what our expectations are, and that that there is some benefit. Maybe you can, I think, we got a document earlier today, at least I saw an email that said, apparently, the way we treat it right now, it's a SUP and everything except R4 and PUD, is that correct? It doesn't specify inside or outside right now, does it, the PSA?
And again, I think that's, I think that will be one of the helpful outcomes and products, because we treat these as electrical generation facilities, i.e., they are not more specifically defined in the ordinance, it is a very generic category, so it works. And so I think one of the very helpful outcomes of this exercise will be to better
Better understand.
Separate those out from a switching station, a battery storage facility, they're all very different things as we are quickly learning, and so I think that will be, but generally you are correct, generally they are lumped in with electrical generation facilities, and it's pretty ubiquitous throughout our district.
And I think that's, that's where we need to clearly focus on what it is we're trying to allow, because we think it fits with our county and what we don't think fits. So anyway, thank you.
A quick follow-up, Ms. Supervisor Eisenhower brought up the ones that we've done in the past, is there any way to, while this is going on, to get a read from stormwater, like what it's looking like on the ones that we've done, if we've had any stormwater issues? Can they, I mean, it's private property, so, but, I mean, I think that would be, that would be good to know, if we've had issues or if we're going to have issues, and then, so you can think on that for a minute. And I hear Supervisor Eisenhower too about not being able to see it, but, you know, one thing that really got me was when we were, you know, we had approved one, it could have been homes, so, you know, I'd be curious as to know what the residents, now that it's solar, but during construct, that was a much larger impact on the residents than I ever thought. I don't, I was naive in my thinking, and so, you know, I mean, and there were things that we didn't anticipate that happened, you know, ways that you got in there that they were not necessarily supposed to. So I'd like to know too about, you know, do you just pop one behind a neighborhood because there's a big piece of acreage back there? What's the impact to the, to the residents with that? Because there is an impact. So, but I'm curious about the stormwater, if there's any way to know that, and...
I think what we can, I think what we can provide you back to that, I think, to the questions I've heard so far, we can certainly provide you with the staff reports and the SUP conditions for the three that have come forward so far, that would sort of provide you all the same information, we can give you the information on the one that was not approved, if you would like it, but that's easy enough to pull forward to it. The stormwater one, we are going to think about a little bit more, because I think your question really is...
What's happening now?
Is, once it's up and running, what are the experiences with the stormwater? And I think the one on the Hunt Farm has been up and going for only a little bit of time. Most of the challenges we see from a stormwater are those consistent across the construction industry in general about, you know, whether or not the silt fence stays up during construction. I think those are very typical, I'm probably going to set those aside, because I think those are not unique to solar farms, and sort of, I will, I'll try to glean from staff what our experience has been, once they are up in operation.
Okay.
And I'll give you a little summary piece, again, at least what we've seen so far, with the one that's, that's, remember, we've had sort of three that have been approved so far, one is up and operating, one is right in the middle of construction still, and the other one has not broken ground yet. So at least on this first two, we can probably give you a couple of short sentences about the timeline it has taken with which the bulk of the activity happens, all that construction activity, what length of time that is, versus, you know, what it's like when all that's gone, and they're just up and operating, we can give you a couple of sentences on that for some starting context.
And then you brought up the decommissioning in forty, I guess, for me, it's like, we're not going to be here in forty years, so we don't know how it's going to go, and we just hope somebody is here that really makes sure that it goes correctly. And then you, the, you mentioned wind, which we don't, I mean, is that something we should be looking at as well? Looking at, and I'm sorry, it's really difficult for me, and if you all, it's coming, your conversation is coming right in my ear, I'm sorry, so if you all could just step out, if you're going to talk, I apologize, but the way this room is set up, conversations just come right here to me. Anyway, if that's something that we should look at, or having looked at our county a bit, and is that an issue we're going to be faced with too, moving forward?
I think you're only faced with it if, if you think there's a market, and if you're hearing that there's a market or an interest, and people want that land use allowed, but I would say, from a standpoint of supporting renewables, you know, there is decentralized wind, which is not huge wind turbines, we're talking, you know, turbines that probably are a hundred foot tall, maybe two hundred feet tall, versus a, you know, commercial-grade utility-scale wind turbine, which is six hundred and fifty-plus, you know, feet tall. It depends on, you know, the conditions, the wind conditions, but there's evolving technology there all the time.
Okay.
Yeah, it's something, we're involved in another project, hopefully, that will look and to explore some of those opportunities in Virginia and some...
And then just one last question for now, you mentioned that, I believe, that some counties that you've done this for, they take a percentage of, and I don't think that that's anything that that we've looked at, that that would be something I would be interested in, is looking at the percentage of the land, you know, it's such a yin and a yang, because you have, sorry, you have families who, you know, they just don't have the fourth and fifth generations that want to farm that land, so do you take that ability, do you take the ability of the use away from them? So I, you know, I guess I would want to know the pros and cons of... So I, you know, I guess I would want to know the pros and cons of limiting the percentage of land that you allow solar on in your community. Because that's a, that's a tough question. I mean, then you just kind of hold them where they can't do anything with their land.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, having a planning background, we do that all the, all the time. You know, we tell people what they can and can't do.
Yeah, we just did that, we were trying to work through that earlier.
It, it's, it's a challenge, it's, it's a struggle. And I think in a lot of ways, absent that limit, everyone, you, you're limited by the natural size of the county. Right?
Right.
And if you say, well, you can do it in this zoning district and not this zoning district, well, you're limited by that. I, I don't know that I would necessarily advocate in all cases for a maximum aggregate number. But I think it, it falls to what are the other competing interests and goals? You know, preservation of ag or preservation of forested land. You know, preservation of land for, for growth and development. And, and, and I think you weigh all of those things to try to figure out what the best answer is for the county.
So that's something you have to work through with this, through this conversation, I guess.
You could tell me a number and then we could put that down.
Could I make that decision for everyone?
And that's really going to be framed on if, if that is, if the, if identifying, working through a process, coming up with, with something with which to define a percentage is if, you know, that comes back from the board as being a consensus item that you all want as part of this, you know, version 1.0 set of ordinance amendments and policies or something.
And, and on that point, I will mention, there is one county in Virginia, the tack that they took. Well, they said, look, we're developing all of this solar because Dominion and AEP have to meet their goal. So they derive their percentage by, of, of the county. They said, okay, the, the, the area of the county, they, they said, we'll take the area of the county that will allow for solar to be developed to produce enough electricity to offset the use of our residences and property owners. That's what they pegged. They said, we're going to provide for our need, you know, hypothetically, because it's all generally going to the grid. But we're going to provide proportional based on that need. Which is an interesting way to look at it.
And that very helpful though, when you're talking about the comparison to the Norfucks and the Arlington's and so forth, where there's not going to be nearly enough land to meet the need for the community.
No, and, and I would say, you all are probably the most more, most suburban community that we work with, maybe absent Albemarle. And there's going to be a need to look at a lot of different ways to, to provide for solar beyond just these ground-mounted facilities. And, and that's something that I would, I, I'm sure that, you know, your staff's looking into.
Yeah, and that, that's the, one of the issues that, that concern me. You know, we, we celebrated a long career of one of our IT staff members earlier today and were reminded that when she started off, our computer system basically would occupy the size of a large bedroom. Right? And, and now what can we do with this or with, with a watch or, or your phone? So, you know, as the technology develops, the expectation is it's going to be more flexible, more efficient and the like. And our, in, in 40 years, I guess we've got to ask the question of, so we've got all this big infrastructure that is not as efficient as, as opportunities to put things on rooftops or on top of parking lots or whatever else might, might come along. We, we do know that a, a lot, so that's just a frustration. That's not a, it's not really any policy guidance. But one, one thing that I, I do wonder about is, you know, I, the, the photograph that you're showing up here right now looks to me pretty much like a flat, large, flat surface that doesn't move. Maybe I'm wrong about that. But I do know that there are panels that are, will sort of follow the sun. And I just wonder if we have examples of localities in which the different styles are utilized and may have more of an, a, a history of what its impact is on erosion of the soils, the impact on, you know, the compaction of the land and so forth.
We, we can certainly look and see if there's any research to that. I'm sure there's something out there comparing the two. You, you know, you have, you have systems that are on racking that doesn't move.
Right.
But certainly you have racking that does tilt.
Mm-hmm.
And, and.
It would seem to me that, that there's at least an argument to be made that that, the latter would have less of an impact on things like erosion because it's not a constant sheeting of water onto the land below. It, it'll depend on what time of day a rain happens to come and so forth.
Well, and, you know, there's so many variables too. You could have a site that, that was the case, but you could have a site that was poorly constructed and has compacted soils and, and it's going to look different in terms of the effects of that. So we can definitely see if there's anything out there.
So I just had a couple of things. I, I agree with Mr. Eisenhower in that I believe most people would expect that we would be utilizing smaller scale. Everyone I've talked to, they don't want to look at them. Nobody wants to see them. You go drive through into other localities and that's all you see. You know, we talk about our scenic corridors and I don't think people want to see them. The three that we've approved so far, they're kind of off the beaten path. And you would literally have to drive through them, through areas just to get to them, to see them. Hindsight's 2020, the, the one that we did in Norvalia, that was a mess. And I think the expectation, and you don't know what you don't know, but now we know more. And that's why we're able to come up with some guidelines and policy that hopefully will better protect surrounding neighborhoods. And, and, you know, we weren't expecting the neighborhood to be, have their, I mean, Ruth and I went to their neighborhood meeting and it was, do not touch our crate myrtles. And what did they do? They came through and massacred their crate myrtles. It's a beautiful old neighborhood. And then the, we thought the transmission lines were going to go one way, they went out another way. So our expectations were not met based on, you know, what we saw happening. So I think we need to make sure that we're protecting to the utmost surround, anybody, you know, if they're going to be up against surrounding neighborhoods, that's a huge consideration for me that I think we need to include. I also want to make sure that, for me, and, and I, I like your idea of us putting together our thoughts and, and submitting them and they, you know, we can work from there. But just as a general concept today, for me, it's very important in light of all of the train derailments we're hearing nowadays and with the hazardous and toxic materials that are being dumped all over communities. People are still trying to, um, get it back all together in a lot of areas in Ohio and Pennsylvania in particular. I would particularly like to see avoidance of at-grade railroad crossings, that the site access is very safe and secure. So we don't have to deal with that. We don't have to worry about that. We don't have to consider that that might happen to our, I would hate for that to happen on our watch or anyone's watch in our locality because we could have taken that extra step to make sure the site access was safe. And then I, I too want to see some specifics on decommissioning. I have concerns about leaching. What happens if we have damaged panels when they're on site? Are we going to do soil testing to make sure the soil is safe? Are we going to be, I don't know, I know water moves at a very slow pace, but I want to make sure that what we're doing now is going to protect our watershed and our aquifer for generations to come. I don't want to screw it up now for them. You know, I want to make sure our grandchildren have good soil. We may need agricultural land at some point because at some point, we may need it, just saying. I want to make sure that no, and we're, you know, the, once it's decommissioned, where's this stuff going to go? I don't want our potentially broken components to go contaminate. Even if it's on the other side of the world, I don't want that to be on us. I want to make sure everything that we do is safe, secure. Our soil is safe, our water is safe. And, and how do we get through that process? How do we start from now to make sure it's safe all the way hundreds of years from now? Yeah, we're not going to be here, but I think it's our due diligence to make sure that our soil and our water is protected way, way down the line. Those are just some of the, the things that I want to make sure that we include in leaching and batteries and all of that. I just want to make sure they're safe. We've approved three and, and I, I wish that we could apply some of this perhaps to what we've already done. I don't know how that decommissioning affects the three, you know, in ongoing policy that we create, how it affects those. But hopefully we'll, we'll be able to have a way to make sure that that process for those three are safe as well. I know it won't apply to this, but yeah, those are just some of the concerns that I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
The chair was very polite to let me ask two follow-ups. One, I never really got an answer, or I don't know that we got an answer. We have these large, larger poles now on Richmond Road.
Yeah.
Is that a direct impact of the solar? So it just of the solar, like the soccer? So I would just like to know if that's going to happen. I, I don't know that Dominion, if that was purposeful or if it was just, oh, we've got to replace our poles so we're making them higher. So I just want to know.
They did it through the neighborhood as well.
Moving forward.
Yeah, the view shed is a mess now.
If that's going to be an issue. And then something that has come, been brought to me by a few citizens is, and other counties in Virginia is where the panels are made. Safety-wise, is that, does that make a difference where they're manufactured? And so just, would like just to know a general answer on that if possible. And if what your experience has shown, if there's any kind of, if there's more toxicity coming from one manufacturer than another. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I've got a few. What's your opinion on solar? How do you feel about solar? Are you for or against it? Just so I know who's representing, who's looking into it. Because if I've got somebody that I'm totally for solar,
Yeah.
my report's going to be different than if I'm middle ground.
Yeah, so I would tell you, I'm an AICP professional. I'm bound by the AICP code of ethics. You know, my job here is regardless of my personal opinions, you know, my job is to work for the community and help you develop the best outcome and solution. Do you still want to know my answer?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I support renewables, you know, to a degree. And, you know, I, I have my own personal opinions about them. I, I've looked at it for my house. It wasn't the right financial decision. But I, I think, you know, the communities I try to work with, I try to understand what your concerns are, what your concerns are, what your concerns are, what staff's concerns are. And balance all of those. And definitely try to avoid my personal opinions interjecting to anything.
All right. I would like to see more, like, we've got a landfill. Be a good solar spot.
Yep.
Hidden, back out of the way, schools, roofs, that sort of thing. I'd like to see more commercial buildings. Or building one down in the Grove area that's going to, warehouse can be huge. And there's potential there for solar on that where it's part of the building. The solar panels, like the one you have right here. I'm just going to tell you, that's the ugliest thing I've ever seen. I just think they're ugly. I don't care what anybody does. They can't make them pretty. But if they're hidden, it's okay. But hiding them behind a neighborhood, I, I think we made a mistake there. And, but we didn't know at that time. So what you don't know, it's hard, hard to take care of. We are, in James City County, we are a premier community, I feel. And with bringing in solar, which is fine if it can be snugged in, if it's a smaller facility, put somewhere, okay. But on the side of the road, I don't care how many trees and all they plant there, they can plant them until the cows come home. But one thing is it'll take forever for them to grow. And by the time they get to the size you want them to, if they're not evergreens, the limbs are dying at the bottom and you're seeing through them. And, or we get a storm comes up, a hurricane or something, messes the trees up. Or we get snow, messes the trees up, or disease or anything else. So, and then if you put a fence up, you're like, well, that's a nice ugly-looking fence to hide the ugly, ugly-looking panels. And there's just no way of dressing them up unless they go up on roofs. And that's when it look like they're part of the building. I, I don't like, when we didn't have some of the ordinances that we have in there now, and we're looking to preserve farmland, solar was a good option because it would keep it from developing and that sort of thing. So that, that worked, but it's not the best option. And being in construction, I can hear them from my office driving the poles in behind the neighborhood right now. And it's daily. And I'm just imagining what the neighbors are hearing that are right next to it. And I'm across the street and through a neighborhood. So that, you know, that noise and that disruption from anything that's close by is going to be disrupted and, and it's going to, you know, hear that all day long, driving those poles and that banging. They're going to hear the trucks coming in, they're going to hear all the noise. And they're going to compact the soil. There's no way not to compact it. If it was on farmland, how is that farmland going to be restored in 40 years? And we were talking about it earlier on some projects that we've had with roadways that we're having to fund now to put them into VDOT standards. The money that these solar people put in place right now that looks good, and in 40 years, we need 40-year numbers. We need inflation and all that. What is that number going to be in 40? And it may be too much for them to do. But there's no need in hanging on all the taxpayers in 40 years that go, well, we, we did the best we could then. It was, it was money that would fit us then. But 40 years from now, it doesn't even come close. So that's something we need to look at. The lines, it's been talked about. We have no control where Virginia Energy runs the lines. We thought we did. And okay, we're not going to put them here, they're going to go in the back. And we're not doing anything to Richmond Road. And all of a sudden, we go in there and we got more poles up there than, than the Dagong Forest has trees. And we're trying in James City County, get rid of poles, put lines underground. And then what do we do? We end up approving two projects and Dominion comes in there and runs a bunch more poles and higher poles and everything else. We're like, crap. Everything we're trying to do and the citizens are asking us to do, they're looking at us and go, well, how'd you approve that? Well, we got solar. We can say we got solar and we're saving who knows what. By the time you put it in and get the sun and the days of the sun are working and, and like I say, you're, you're, you almost went down a hundred houses in the amount of solar we can get off of one mega at 10 acres in this area because the sun isn't what it needs to be. So, and, and I'm sure this is going to get better, you know, as we develop more. I mean, you know, when they were in the horse and buggy, it was no bottom of the moon either. We got better at that too. So I'm sure we'll get better at the, at coming up with better ways. But right now, I'm looking at what do we have? We talk about soil types, talk about the land, the trees. That's all I have right now. And I'll put some, probably put some more stuff together. But, but, you know, those are the things I think we, you know, we're really worried about. And how do we, when we're not sitting here, the next board, when it comes due, how do they deal with it? And do they have the funding? And, and that's one thing to fix these sites and clean them up and, and, and back. And, you know, I don't, they say 40-year sites. I don't think with technology, I bet in 20 years, you're going to wipe out most of the panels and there are going to be new panels that create more energy and all that. They say, no, you know, we've got investment in there. I've heard that song and dance too. That just, you know, technology's going to make it so that they can get more out of it and change them all, I think, which would be good.
So, so I just, I would just make the point though, that we have policies in place that have made it clear that renewable energy is going to be expected, that we are on, on a path to go to renewables. Wind, solar and, and other forms of renewable energy are going to be in our future. I happen to think it's a good thing because I don't think that we could say that the, the use of fossil fuels has been really a great asset to us. And, and I do think that when we think about the, the disruption and noise of the construction of a project, there would have been that construction noise during the construct, during the building of the 200-some homes that would have been on that site in, in the back gorge. the back of Norwich. The, the impact today, in terms of noise, is not very significant. Now, there are other problems, which we again, have to take into account. The fact that, and I hope that one of the things that we will get a clear sense here is of what the limitations currently are in terms of state regulation through the SCC and the General Assembly, that may restrict what we can and can't expect in, in these situations. We can't tell Dominion, you can't put these utility lines in these particular places. We've tried that, and we don't succeed at it very well. So the, the real question is going to be, and, and I, and I agree with you that panels, or whatever collectors of solar power are in the future, will make these large panels today look out of scale. But I also think that the efficiency of them is likely to be such that they will be replaced, that, that those big panels will be replaced by smaller, more efficient ones that will have less of an impact. I think we're in a transition period. We've got to try to figure out the best way to get through that transition period from the initial stages of a new technology to one that's going to be much more fully developed. And the question really is, how do we manage it in the best way to not be disruptive for the community, not be damaging to the, to the land in the long term, but still meet the needs that we have to improve the, the sources of energy that are available to us, so that we can do something to address the dramatic kinds of, you know, I've, I've been a big fan of saying, you know, we've got all these million-square-foot warehouses, distribution centers, we really ought to be putting solar on top of there. You know, now it seems like the best thing we could do is to put a special paint that's going to be on the market within a year, that will reflect out in, in the heat, and have, can, can have a very significant impact on the temperatures of, of the world. So, you know, we, the one thing I would say is that, you know, this is going to be part of our interim movement toward a different, more sustainable kind of energy, something which the, the demand for is growing constantly. I mentioned that, I heard a couple of weeks ago that Loudoun County, their data centers are consuming 25% of the electricity in the Commonwealth. You know, that's just one source of demand for, for energy. And we have so many others that people are increasingly relying on. So.
And, and I'm not, I'm not against any of the renewable energies by any means. But I'm also, don't want to junk up my community.
Right.
With that crap that's going to look like hell when you go down the road.
Right.
And I want it to be hidden and utilized. And I think it's all, you know, I think it, it, it's one more component we can use with, you're never, you're never going to get rid of diesel fuel and gasoline and all that.
Yes, you will.
You won't get rid of it. Because that's what it takes to run some of this other, is some of that. It'll, it'll, you, I think that'll be a part of the whole scenario. I don't think you're going to switch over. And, because, you know, will they get better as they go? Yeah. And hopefully they will. And everything, the batteries and all that, and we won't have to, you know, count on all that, pulling out of the ground to, to take care of the batteries, and then, when I have a place, throw those away. So there's, but I think it's, can be one more piece of how we get our energy. I don't think one thing is, you know, is the do-all for everything. But I think each one of them add to the 100% we need to keep going and, and have air conditioning.
I'm just, I'm just cautioning that, that what we want to make sure of is that we don't establish such a high level of expectation that it can't be met by this, this form of energy production.
Right. I agree. But I don't, I don't think we, we will make something that can't be met. But I think we will make something that our citizens, you know, demand as far as, you know, because we, not long ago, we were talking about all the tree canopy and saving the trees and all that. And, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we keep it as natural as possible, and try to incorporate. And that's why I say in schools and the dump and all that, it'd be, you know, our sites were maintained, it would be a perfect site for some of this.
So I did have one, just a quick follow-up. Will your report go into any type, like, this mention of schools, warehouses, probably, like, will you go into the possibility of that, and what we might have to do on our end, which I would imagine would be some possible economic incentive in order to encourage company? Will you get into that nitty-gritty, or will that be more something we'll have to do on our end?
It really wasn't responsive to the scope, but we can discuss with staff.
That's, that's fine. I just, moving forward, I just, okay.
I, I think minimally, we want to make sure that, we do try to acknowledge those other.
Opportunities?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Another, one other question. Have you heard of the, which are used, starting to use in the bigger cities, is the windows that are collectors? And they're replacing them with a, and it's, it's, not only, it isn't reflective, like they're damaging other buildings, but it's collecting as well and helping that building out if.
Yeah.
How's that come?
I haven't done a lot of research on those. I haven't seen them in, in any installations. But yes, I've heard of them, and I just don't know the performance.
It'd be nice to know if that was something that, you know, we could incorporate in some of the larger buildings. And we might not be, have a large enough building to incorporate in, but it would be another option that, you know, that wind is collecting while, you know, and it doesn't change any look of the building or anything else. You wouldn't even know it's collecting power. Thank you.
Mr. Holt, Mr. Eisenhower mentioned maybe us individually putting lists together. Should we just email those to you? Is that the easiest way to do that?
That would be great. And obviously, given some of our time constraints, the sooner that you're able to get that to us, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Any other questions?
I'll try to get mine to you by the end of the week.
Mine won't be that soon. I'm going on vacation.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to be baking in the sun myself, so.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Send that solar bower back.
Back.
All right, move into board considerations, request and directives. I'll put them all together.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
I was going to say, I had a chance to attend the Habitat for Humanity. They had a very nice ceremony. I will leave it to Mr. McGlinnan to discuss, since it was his district, but it was a very, it's always nice to go to the Habitat for Humanity ceremonies to see the families come into the community. Also managed to attend the Coast Guard Training Center, Yorktown, as part of the duties I have over with the Chamber. I sit on the Military Affairs Committee. And so we went and put, gave presentations of certificates of achievement, along with a lot of other organizations, to the civilian and the enlisted person of the quarter over there. So we had the opportunity to sit through the first all-hands call that they've had with the new commander, and got a good working relationship. I think we're planning on having, having him get more involved with, with the county. And then yesterday, I managed to go to a ribbon cutting. And then, Mr. McGlinnan is losing, choose home, they're moving from McCall Circle up to Newtown. They cut the ribbon, and they are right in the middle of Newtown. And it's a nice facility that they have there, a good program. So, run by Riverside, supported by Riverside. That's all I have.
A couple of quick things. First of all, Chair and Mr. Stevens and I had the opportunity to, to participate in a tour of Core Six this morning with the Secretary of Commerce for the Commonwealth of Virginia, Karen, wrote it down. Karen Merrick, I'm sorry, Karen Merrick. And it was, it was both very eye-opening for her, I think, and, and a good opportunity for Core Six to learn some opportunities they might have to benefit from coordination with the state. Core Six is a specialty glass company, and they do some unbelievable work. We have, in James City County, a company that has equipment on Mars, and is vitally important to all sorts of things, including, younger people will be interested to know, gaming, virtual reality devices. But it was, it was a very excellent program, and it's part of her three-day tour of Hampton Roads Economic Activities. And it was great that she started it in James City County. We also, after I went to that, I stopped off at the Restore Parking Lot on Jamestown Road to make a contribution to the Slay Hunger Campaign, Christmas in July, if you will, encouraging people to donate non-perishable foods to the House of Mercy and Grove Christian Outreach Center, food banks, and in coordination with Habitat for Humanity. This is the second year that they've done this, and looked like there was a steady flow of donors coming through to, to drop off some food, to help folks get through what may be tough times for, for some. In addition, as Mr. Eisenhower pointed out, we did have another ribbon cutting. There were actually two ribbon cuttings in adjacent homes on Pocahontas Trail in Grove last week. And Habitat is always looking for opportunities to partner with us and with many of the companies in the community. Colonial Sports and Abbott Realty, in particular, played an active role in this. Publix, charitable foundation, Bank of America, all participated in this particular home that, that we participated in. There was another more private ceremony for the other groundbreaking, or ribbon cutting, rather. But two new families moved into that area and are now homeowners who are benefiting from the work that they have done with Habitat to qualify for that, that program, and will be paying Habitat the mortgages on those homes, on no-interest loans. But clear indication, this is not a gift to these individuals. This is something that Habitat has worked with them to purchase. And, and the opportunity has been terrific. And then finally, on July 13th, the Coalition of High-Growth Communities met in Culpeper County, and Mr. Holt and I attended that. I, I serve as Chair of the group, and we had presentations on Arlington County's efforts to deal with the missing middle, as housing is referred to there. We heard a lot about data centers, and a lot about some of the new issues that are confronting localities, including solar. And the Coalition, we, we had probably seven or eight localities represented at that meeting. And have, just as a result of that meeting, looks like we have attracted three or four additional members for the Coalition. So it is a, an organization that does lobby the General Assembly for more tools and for less intrusion by state government on local decision-making. So with that, I'll stop.
So did Arlington talk about their, their new density, that, that ordinance that they put through?
They did.
And that's what, how, with the middle?
Right. And what, what that basically does is it allows for multifamily units in any zoning district. What we wanted to hear them talk about was what the challenges were in that proposal, and what they might do differently if they were doing it over again. And it's, it's not, I don't think, anything that would, would really be directly applicable to James City County. But it was interesting, it's always interesting to hear what other localities are doing to address issues of housing affordability.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just, I forgot to mention that I did attend a ribbon cutting at a new shop. It's a quilting shop out in Norwich. It's Halo Inspirations. And they have all kinds of quilts to produce. And I just wanted to thank Chris Johnson from Economic Development in the Chamber was there. And there was a huge crowd of ladies waiting to get in. So they were very excited to know that their new business was off and running. And the new event out in Croker, I attended the other day, Croker Days, got an invitation from some, some residents out there, and said, come on down. So it was very well-attended, and it was, it was a lot of great fun. So they're hoping to do that every year. So I hope to, hope to be able to visit out there at York River State Park. Huge crowd.
I was just going to say that Core Six was always very involved in Manufacturing Day, when we used to do that. And we're, we're, always had a lot of students, and we're very enthusiastic supporters of Manufacturing Day. So, just a couple of things. One, I met with Superintendent Marr with the National Park Service, and specifically the Superintendent for all the way, I believe, from Fort Monroe to Jamestown. She has, I think, she told me, seven parks that she is under. We discussed, as you, as you might have read, the new fee, it's not a new fee structure, but the free structure, that she is enforcing, in working towards enforcement of this. And she explained that the way that it works is that those fees that are paid go towards the deferred maintenance of that particular park. So if she doesn't collect the fee, she doesn't have, she doesn't have the funds to, to do the work. And so when she arrived here and saw some things that needed to be done, and went back and looked and realized that, you know, maybe there hadn't always been as much enforcement on the fee collection as needed to be, as she pointed out, it is a national park. And, you know, the, what we're up against is, we don't have the signage necessarily that you have another national park, so that people realize that, you know, welcome to this national park. And so we've just been very fortunate that it's in our backyard. And so we think, well, we can just go walking out here and not pay a fee. And unfortunately, with the United States of, of America National Park Service, that's just not the way that it is. She did show me several yearly passes that are quite reasonable, especially if you are a senior citizen. You can pay and get like a lifetime pass. And so she is working very hard to address some deferred maintenance. If you are out jogging on the parkway, they are not going to give you a ticket, but they are going to explain what the new fee structure is. So you need to be, you know, it's not just for you to go out and walk your dog, go jogging. There is a fee attached. So just be aware that you may be stopped by a park service.
Do, do you know, if you buy one of those passes, does that apply to all the national parks?
There are some that do.
Okay.
Yes. So just, you know, they're, they're not in a gotcha. They're just more in the education stage. But, you know, it was, it was a very informative discussion. But along those same lines, there is going to be major work done on the parkway that will impact if you do use it as a, and you can use it if you live out Jamestown Way, and you drive, you use it to drive to your job, or to get onto the interstate, or to 199, or to Yorktown. That is not at the, it's when you pull off and you look in the recreation areas. But however, if you are a commuter that uses that road, please be aware that there is going to be lots of construction going on for the next two years, I believe, 2026. And so your commute will be impacted. It will start down at the Williamsburg area, where there's the circle, there's big potholes there, that's where they'll start. But at some point, they will get every section of the parkway. So, just want to, but if anybody has any questions, I would urge you to reach out to the National Park Service, or if you want to have more information from me, you're welcome to reach out to me. Very quickly, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to go to NACO. It was, I thought, a very valuable conference. It's always good to be able to network. But we attend, I attended several great workshops on housing affordability, workforce, mental health. I mean, they just, you know, every county is faced, no matter how large, how small, lots facing the same issues. So it was good to hear how other people were, were dealing with those. And just really proud of James City County, too. And, and yesterday, I just had so many people coming up to me, oh, yeah, I saw you guys on the stage. That's so great. So, anyway, that was just really a great opportunity. So I urge someone, anyone, to go next year as well. So. Oh, yes. So we, thank you. We were fortunate enough to be, it was Scott, Mr. Stevens, Ms. Brittle, who else besides? Okay. Who else besides, okay. The Chair, Mr. Hippel, and myself were invited to a discussion with Senator Warner about the 250th birthday coming up of our country and how we were going to do that. But we got into several other topics with the Senator, including the Interstate 64 and, you know, really pushing for additional funding to get that scene, to get that pushed through all the way from, to Richmond. So hopefully, I think we made some progress there. But I, I think the day before, I think it was the first, was when Ms. Britle had been appointed to, to be our point person. So I look forward to hearing what she might be bringing to us and how we might participate in the 250th. Of course, you know, we were right here, so we need to be front and center for that. But I thought it was a great discussion and appreciate the fact that there were four people from James City County that were included in that discussion. So, thank you for that reminder.
All right, well, I'm, y'all covered mainly everything. I'm gonna turn my time over to County Administrator Frisbee.
Thank you, Chair members of the board. I'll be fairly quick, I think. I do have a correction on our Good Neighbor Grant deadline. I think I told you July 15th last month. It's really September 15th. So those neighborhoods or individuals who would like a $500 matching grant that basically improves the appearance of their community or neighborhood. The grant deadline is September 15th. And the number, 757-259-5375, if they have questions, 259-5375. Also a reminder, Yarmouth Creek Watershed Management Plan. We do have a public meeting scheduled for Monday, July 31st, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at the James City County Library Meeting Room on Croker Road. It's the second meeting. It'll provide an overview of the planning progress to date, survey results to date, and an opportunity for community members to weigh in on recommendations. So again, that's Monday, July 31st, Yarmouth Creek Watershed Management Plan, 5:30 to 7:30 at the James City County Library on Croker Road. And then finally, I do want to make just an announcement of this, of a five-and-dime trail opening. We're having at least some public information on that. There's been a committee working behind the scenes, really trying to generate some interest along Route 5, the five of the five-and-dime and Route 10, which is, of course, the 10, that part of the dime of it. And it crosses the City of Hopewell, Prince George County, Charles City County, James City County, and Surrey County. And the trail highlights local restaurants, retail shops, parks, and other outdoor recreation venues along the routes for day trippers and others in our area. A ribbon cutting is scheduled on our side for Thursday, August 3rd at 11:00 AM. That'll be held at Billsburg Brewery on Jamestown Road, so at our James County Marina. So again, that'll be August 3rd at 11:00 AM at the Marina. So again, more to come on that, but excited to have that rolling out as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, with us for recess at some point, either before closed session or after you call within.
We'll go into closed session and then we'll go into recess.
Thank you.
Does that be all right? Is that good for our body? Take a little recess before we get in there too much.
All right, I'd like to have a motion to discuss the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of a public body pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3 and pertaining to property located 2054 and 2054B, Jamestown Road, and consulting with legal, legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific language matters requiring the provision of local advice such as counseling here regarding proposed under the Virginia Public Procurement Act in pursuant of Section 2.23711A8 of the Code of Virginia and discussion of awards of a public contract involving expenditures of public funds and discussion of the terms or scopes of such contracts where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of a public body pursuant of Section 2.2-3711A29 of the Code of Virginia and pertaining to the contract between the county and the city of Williamsburg for the Williamsburg Regional Library System. And number four, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditures of public funds and discussion of the terms or scopes of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiation strategies of a public body pursuant of Section 2.2-3711A29 of the Code of Virginia pertaining to the contract between the county, the city of Williamsburg, and the Williamsburg James City County Schools. Consideration, number five, consideration of personal matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards and/or commissions pursuant of Section 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia. That would be the reappointment of the Clean County Commission and reappointment of Economic Development Authority. I have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Go calls, sir, please.
Seth.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Aye.
I need a certification.
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify that we only spoke about those items we indicated we would speak about.
Thank you, sir. Roll call.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Isner?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
All right. What actions have we taken?
Mr. Chair, have a motion to accept the competing proposal for new government center by Clancy in days.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please, sir.
Mr. Isner?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
In a motion for resolution electing to terminate the restated contract for the joint operation of schools, City of Williamsburg and County of James City.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Isner?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
All right. Gentlemen.
We have a motion to appoint, these are reappointments, a reappointment of Mr. Kevin Radcliffe, Ms. Rachel West, Mr. Heath Richardson to the Clean County Commission for three-year terms expiring July 31st, 2026. Do them all at the same time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the reappointment of, let's see.
EDA.
Yeah, Ms. Lynn Meredith and Mr. Joe Stanko for four-year terms expiring on 1st of August, 2027.
Roll call, please, sir.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Isner?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next, we'll need a motion for adjournment until 5:00 p.m. on September 12th, 2023, for a regular meeting.
So moved.
So moved. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Isner?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Thank you much. Have a good month off.
Yeah.